These are all signed by North County.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes.
We up?
Not yet. Yes, we're up.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Monday, August 16th, 2021. It's 10:00 a.m. We're here for a special session in Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. We have Commissioners Hutchins, Straight, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall. I'll be presiding over the meeting. At this time, we normally have public testimony. Anybody that's watching via the Internet can go to our webpage and to the banner of Ask Questions or Make Comments and send something to us and give us a phone number, and we can call you back if you want to address the court. If not, you can type in a question or a statement that you'd like read to the court, and we'll come back to this a little bit later in the meeting to give everybody time online to make comments. Being old business, we'll go to new business, action items. I'm going to skip the first one and go to two, allow the hospital to make their presentation. I know they've got a lot on their hands right now, so let's get them going first. So, action item two, the presentation made by Hunt Regional Hospital requesting county's ARP funding to assist with staffing demands at the hospital due to the current COVID outbreak. Rich, if you'd like to introduce your program and...
Thank you very much, Judge. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. My name is Richard Carter. I'm the CEO for Hunt Regional Healthcare, and we wanted to share with you a little bit of what's going on with the COVID and give you a little bit of perspective with respect to the past and the present and the future, and ask your assistance with respect to the Rescue Fund Act dollars that are available for distribution, which we understand will not be a quick process. I'm sure it'll be an extended process, but we want to be part of that process. So, we had put together a presentation for your evaluation, and I do want to introduce Reese Hurley, who is behind me on my left. He's our chief nursing officer, and much of what you'll hear today really goes back to staffing. And so if you have any questions with respect to staffing, he probably is the best person to answer those questions from our perspective with the most knowledge. And actually, he's the chief nursing officer. He's been in that position about year and a half, going on two years, and he actually had to work shifts this weekend, which is pretty unusual for leadership to have to work in the shifts because of the number of patients versus the lack of staffing. So, anyway, we'll start. I'm not sure how to run this. Okay, there we go. So, first off, I want to share with you what's been taking place. So, you've probably heard, read about COVID surges, and we are experiencing that in Hunt County in perspective. So, right now, I think this morning, we are starting to push towards 70 patients in the hospital with COVID. Friday, we had 62. The week before that, we were in the high 40s. The week before that, we were in the high 30s. The week before that, we were in the low 30s. The week before that, we were in the 20s. Am I too close?
Yes.
Okay, and just as close as six weeks ago, we had five. So, we've gone from five to 70 in a very short span. And last year, when we went through this surge, where we ended up with as many as 72 patients in the hospital, it took, it was a very slow gradual grow, buildup. This time has been very quick, and that is creating a lot of our issues. So, we're holding patients in the ED right and left. This morning, we're holding 15 patients in the ED because we have no beds available. We have outfitted our tent. You've probably seen that. We are holding ED patients in the ER waiting room. We have opened up an ancillary inpatient wing or unit in our day surgery area, which can hold 10 patients. And so, we're looking at expanding that as well. So, the staffing that takes to accommodate that patient growth is fairly material. ICU currently is a 16-bed unit. We currently have for ICU beds. We have 19 in the ICU, and like I said, we have five in the ER waiting to get to the ICU. So, we are starting to double up into ICU. The inpatient alternative care side, I mentioned that. We also can't transfer patients. We've transferred a few patients, one to El Paso, one to San Antonio, several to Fort Worth, but you can't transfer patients locally to Dallas, McKinney, or even to the east of us. That's an issue we struggle with. Here's some trend lines, and you can just, I think the important thing is you can see they're all going up, and this is just over the last couple of weeks. And this is our TSAE, which is a 19-county, 19 counties?
Dallas, one more.
So, and so this is, so this is an accumulation of information, and you can see they're all going up. And so, this is the actual patients with COVID. No, excuse me. This is the suspected patients with COVID, and you see it's flattened off a little bit, so it might be a good sign, or it might be just that the TSA, the regional people are behind on their weekend data. And this is the actual confirmed COVID patients in hospitals going straight up. And so, that is, that is a concern as well. Our, this is the hospital occupancy for everybody, and you can kind of just see us at Hunt. We are 100% full. We've been this way for, Reese, three weeks?
Yes, sir.
100% full for three, four weeks now. 41% of our patients have been COVID, and we're very high. ICU, 100% as well. Been that way for three, four weeks, and like I said, we're at 19. This is our TSA data. What this is important is what percentage of our, of our beds are COVID. So, we're at 27%. So, last year, the governor decided that 15% was crisis. When a region or an area hits 15%, that's when all the mandates go into effect. Now, our TSA region is not quite 15% as a region, but we have been well over 15% for a while. And right now, we're at, you know...
1987, right?
Go here, 1987?
That's the current TSA.
Okay. So, we have exceeded the 15% for the current TSA. Okay, for a long while, it was not that way. Excuse me. So, last 24 hours, census of 119, which is, that's a midnight census. Daytime census is going to be much higher than that. We don't do a whole lot of pediatrics. That's the good news. So, you can see that most of that pediatric data is, or inpatients are in common, Dallas and Tarrant County. Not too many of the outlying areas have pediatric units. That's a good thing, but they're full as well. This is just a reflection of our county area, TSA, and Somerville down here may not be reporting their data, but they're in pretty good shape. Fannin has just started reporting, and everybody else is well over the 15%, as you can see. We're not leading the pack at 41, but we're close. So, there are a couple higher than us, and you can see over here, we're about number five out of the total group. So, we are trying to plug our payroll gaps, our nursing gaps, and our cardiopulmonary gaps and other technical technician gaps with agency nurses. Last year, the state got into the business of providing hospitals like us with agency nurses. It was a great thing. We had about, what, about 30 state nurses last year?
And we had to hire directly.
So, we had about 60 agency nurses to fill the gaps so we could take care of business. 30 came through the state, 30 through private agencies. The state's not doing that this year. They're asking the private agencies and the hospitals to fill the gaps through the public, or through the private sector. And so, we are trying to do that. We had about 15 to 20 start today. We had about 15 last week start.
So, excuse me for interrupting, Rich, but didn't the governor announce he's sending out 2,500 to the hospitals? Does that mean we're not getting any of those?
We're not sure what that means. What that, we think that means is that he is, they're trying to funnel it through the private agencies. Do you know anything more about that, Reese?
But they're paying for it, though, not, not y'all?
I don't know.
You don't know that? Okay.
That part is up in the air, Judge Stovall. So, Thursday, when I was on the phone call with the local RAC, they did say 2,500 nurses would be dispersed throughout Texas. TSAE, they said it'd be 700 to 800 nurses that they would have. They promised a date until September 30. And, but at the end of that, they did recommend that we still come to our local, our local county to ask for assistance. So, the payment of those nurses is undetermined at this time.
Okay.
So, we think they're going through the private agencies, and it'll be on our payroll or our checks to get it paid for. And you can kind of see, this is the trends, the trend lines for last January, December, January, and February. We were, you know, down here in the summertime or the fall, and then shot up. That's, that's when it was really bad. Came back down in the spring, and now it's shot back up like it was, you know, six months ago. So, demand for nurses and supply are totally off-center, and so the state is trying to bring in nurses from outside the state. And, but as we had said, they have not committed to paying for those as they did six months ago. That would be nice if they would. So, the mathematics on this is why we're coming to you, because the Rescue Care Act is the funding that y'all have received for distribution to the community for COVID relief. And through the Texas Department of Emergency Management, you may have received that letter. They do, in the fourth paragraph, they do quote that "the money is there to support urgent COVID response efforts to continue to decrease the spread of the virus, including enhanced staffing expenses at hospitals and premium pay for essential workers." So, I wanted to share this with you. So, typically, an agency rate, right now, what we are having to pay because of supply and demand is about $130 an hour, and we are expecting that to go up. Our average RN rate is $30 to $35 an hour, so there's a delta of $97, $95 to $100 per hour, which we're paying, are having to pay for these nurses. And right now, we have about 35 or 40, and that's, hopefully, will be going up. So, and these are, these are, this is the data for the week. So, August 9th, we had seven, then August 16th, some more, which is today, and then next week, we'll get hopefully another 11, which will help plug us the gaps. And once we get these in to working, then the cost, the premium cost, is this, is that, as that letter outlines, the enhanced staffing and premium pay is projected to be about $200,000 a week. We are planning to go as high as 100 inpatients by the end of the month. Hopefully, that will not happen, but that is what our current planning is. And so, if we have 100 COVID inpatients, then we will be in crisis and emergency mode for quite a while. You can see our previous peak was 78. So, I'm coming before you to ask your, your consideration and your support for the hospital district with respect to the Rescue Act plan and how you might spend that money to assist us on this premium pay. We're going to have an immediate need for some of that pay, but I'm also hoping that you might reserve how you spend that money over time, because there might be other needs, or we just don't know how long this is going to last. So, if this lasts through the end of August, that's going to be one need. If it lasts through the end of December, that's going to be a whole different situation. Hopefully, that won't be the case, but time will tell. So, your assistance with that on our behalf would be greatly appreciated. And if, and like I said, if you could reserve a third or a half for healthcare and just see how it pans out, then I think that would be a wise choice to make. We are, in my perspective, we are the tip of the spear when it comes to the COVID fight, and, and we have many patients on ventilators. Couple other examples, we're having to, we had to purchase five ventilators, six ventilators, because we are running out of ventilators. We've never had to use this many ventilators. That's $138,000 that we're having to spend. We had to buy a patient monitoring system because we're opening up these secondary locations. We want to be able to monitor people's cardiac rhythms. That's another $140,000 that we have to spend just to take care because of the COVID surge. So, that's what the, the CARES Act took good care and well care of us for the past year and a half, but that ended January, excuse me, June 30th. And just as soon as that ended is when the Delta variant took off, not crazy. So, the American Rescue Act is, is, is there to take its place, and we hope your, your interest is very strong. We're certainly here to answer questions. That's why I asked Reese to come, because if you've got some staffing questions, he can give you a little more detail than I might be able to. So, yes, sir?
And actually, I like the, a lot of this is money that's already been spent as far as a reimbursement aspect of it, but also the future of needed as far as what can happen.
Yes. You know, I think we are spending money right now on this premium pay. We are spending money on new equipment right now, because we are planning for the future, and we want to take care of our, of our community as best we can. And, you know, I often look at the nurses as being the ones at the front line, and, and they are the ultimate tip of the spear, because they're taking care of those patients every day. And I'm, I'm in the back, you know, thrusting the spear forward, because I've got to provide them the resources that they need. And so, we need some help with that thrust.
I think in the plan, I think you pay the essential workers like an extra $13 an hour, up to $25,000 a year, I think, in this, in the ARC money, or was that in the other money? Remember Bruce?
I'm not sure.
One of, one of the funds, either the ARC money or the old COVID fund that we had, we could pay essential workers up to an additional $13 an hour, not to exceed $25,000 a year.
Y'all can?
Well, we could through that money.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if that fits this program or not. Daniel, can y'all look at that and see if it might fit this program? Because I think that would help retain your nurses and keep them from fleeing if you could pay them extra money, bonus money.
You're saying, see whether we can do the same thing?
I think we can do it. I think it's, I don't remember if I read it in the ARC or if it was in the CARES Act that we paid that.
I think it was in the CARES.
That was in the CARES.
It's much broader than CARES.
So, we'd probably still do it in that, potentially. Yeah. So, that's something else y'all might look at is if, you know, with, with funds from us, if you could pay your, your nurses additional funds to keep them, you know, like hazard pay, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, we certainly want to pay our, our employed staff a little more as well, and we've, we've tried to do that. But the real concern is this premium pay for these agency nurses. That's, that's the major draw. And because that's big dollars, 200,000 a week, and that money adds up quickly.
I would like to point this out, though. It's not that they're leaving. It's a lot of them are getting sick. They're coming down with COVID themselves, therefore, they're having to go quarantine and...
We do. We have about 20 or so employees who are quarantined. Some of those are nurses, and many of, probably at least half to two-thirds are nurses, because they are on the floor with the COVID patients, interacting on a, on a regular basis. So, they, they gown up, they mask up, they, they goggle up everything they can, but sometimes it still, it still is transmissible. Reese, any, any thoughts on that?
So, currently, we're having, now, Rich, at 20, last number was 28 people out. So, if we bring 40 people in, then you have another 28 calling out, you'll kind of see the disparity that it's creating. And we're actually, you know, when we were disaster planning here four weeks ago, when we saw these numbers going up, we had, we should come up with a timeline, and we're functioning two weeks ahead of our original timeline based on when the agency staff was going to arrive off of necessity. So, we would have liked to have waited two weeks to do double occupancy and open up a day surgery, but those patients just came too fast, and we really just had to, had to go before we have enough help, to be honest with you, but what we're doing.
Commissioners, we met with them last Friday, Thursday or Friday, Mark and I did. And Mark and I's recommendation today is that we commit to give them a million dollars to start with and kind of see where the state goes. I think y'all gave us the number, 200,000 a week is what y'all were expecting in additional costs for staffing.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So, that would buy time for them and give them the confidence to be hiring and knowing they wouldn't get in a financial burden, knowing that this money would be coming. And I think that's still my opinion today, to let this thing kind of work itself out. But I want to support them and take care of our community, just as they do. And I'd like to see the court commit to fund a million dollars of that ARP money to the hospital with the stipulations just worked out with, between the attorneys.
Absolutely.
I think they're currently working on it. That's my question, is are we, are we going to stipulate where the money's going to or what it's going to be used for?
They're going to have to follow the ARC plan. I mean, that's, that'll be the stipulation, is they have to follow the same rules we do with ARC money. Whoever we give ARC money to, they got to follow the rules that are outlined in ARC.
And we certainly, certainly do everything we can to follow the guidelines and the rules, and I'm sure there'll be some paperwork that has to be filed and all those kind of things. But I think the, I think the commitment is the key and, and to keep, trying to keep us whole, so that we can continue to provide the care that the county citizens require.
Well, we certainly want to keep our pulse on it and be ready to help where we can. And, and if the courts, we can't, the goal is, is that we, I guess Daniel sent us kind of a draft that he's put together for an agreement. He hasn't sent it to y'all's attorney yet. We got a week. Their board meets next Tuesday, just as ours does. We meet at 10. They meet at 6 that night.
5:30, a week from tomorrow.
5:30 on Tuesday evening. So, we can't sign an agreement until next Tuesday, basically, once both entities pass a resolution approving the agreements. So, today, we're looking for comments, guidance, to make sure the courts are united to help them out and so that we can continue to work on the agreement, and then both boards can act next Tuesday to have the funds available. And then, then we'll keep, keep moving forward and hope we don't have to do any more, and hope that monkey gets off y'all's back, and you won't need any more.
Well, the thing we have not seen yet is a peak. So, you saw, you saw the trend lines, and there was no, hopefully, that one might show a peak, but it just could be that the data is a little slow in getting in. So, we're hoping for a peak.
So, is the court agreeing with what we're doing?
So, are we going to relook at this every month then, or what's the procedure for this?
Oh, I think we'll be in touch. We have weekly meetings still with our committee, the hospital board review committee, and we'll be in touch with them every Tuesday. And Rich will be communicating with them and be in those meetings. And if they see that it's not going, we'll be able to get it, and then we'll come back to court as we need it, and see if we need to extend it or extend more money or whatever's necessary. So, we'll keep, we'll keep our pulse on it with them. We're communicating every week. So, and we can communicate every day if we need to. So, I think Rich knows he can call at any time. We'll get something set up. So...
Rich, I agree with you in reference to that, but this money that will be given, will it be able to pay for some of this that they're already getting referenced, ventilators and stuff like this? Will this be able to go back and pay possibly part of it?
I think so.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, when you look at the draft, oh, I got to come talk to the microphone for people here online.
If you look at the draft, there's a big paragraph in the middle, and that's verbatim from the federal rules. There are about three or four sections, actually, where the final resolution could transfer that money to the hospital. And what we'll do is reference all of those sections generally, unless this court wants to have more control over the money, and then you can take some of that out if you want. But basically, we're going to, the idea would be to transfer that money under the current Treasury guidance for how that money has to be spent. And the county doesn't want to be in the position of micromanaging anything, and they especially don't want to be in the business of coming in after the fact and trying to audit to see what money that might, almost certainly will be intermingle with other money, whether it's spent the right way. So, it's, it's better for the county to let the hospital do that accounting and then give us the paperwork for our eventual audit. And then, if the federal government or potentially the state government might have a hand in auditing some of those fund usage. But whoever the auditor is, our eventual agreement, and in fact, it's listed in here, the hospital will be, the hospital district will be required to give the county the paperwork and explanations necessary to get through with that audit. But that big paragraph is just one of the, I think, four. They do include all of the uses that have been discussed so far.
Even the past uses before this resolution is signed?
Well, that part's not clear, but it's not something that we're going to have to worry about, because their expenses are so great moving forward that as long as they spend it based on exactly what's in here, which I don't think it references specifically past expenses in the, the way that you're talking about. But it'll be, you know, on them to ensure that they spend the money the right way to meet the sub-grant assurances. Otherwise, the negative consequences are that some of that money might have to be repaid. So, and nobody wants that. And so, there will be some auditing procedures that get put into place. And if we end up hiring an outside auditor, like we did with the last COVID funds, then they'll be helping to work on that as well with the county auditor's office.
Goodness. Thank you.
And Daniel, this is, this is not the totality of the agreement. There will be an additional agreement beyond this. This is just for the Commissioners' Court to make this.
That's correct. Yeah. And so, if you look at the, this is just a draft, but basically, the meat and guts of the agreement are the four items that are listed on the second page. That's what we'll work with the hospital's attorney to finalize. And they'll probably list some specific sections of the Treasury guidance.
Okay.
So, that may be more specific than this, but basically, we're saying, we give you the money, you give us the right paperwork, we give it to the federal government, and if the costs are disallowed, then some of that money's probably going to have to be repaid. But these are so broad that that, the chances of that are extremely small.
I did hear from BKD last week, and they're looking to see if they need to do anything different for us to engage them, or if the contract we have with them already is going to be acceptable to continue helping us. So, I'll be back with the court as soon as I know that, either take action to get a new contract with BKD or to extend the one if we need to. But we'll be engaging them to help us with this, so make sure we get this done right.
Rich and Reese, one quick question.
Sure.
I know there's been some press releases, but do y'all, y'all have an update on Commerce ER and any comment on whether or not, how the, these funds from the county might interact with that timeline?
Our original plan with the closure of the Commerce ER was to hold it in closure for one to three weeks. I, I'm going to say that I think we're still on that same plan. Reese, do you have any thoughts or updates on that? I know it all hinges on how many, how many of these specialty nurses, agency nurses, we can get here, so, so that we can, you know, move patients back.
We have a timeline on our agency nurses. We're getting 20 today.
You want to come up here?
So, we have a timeline on our agency nurses from contact with them, and we were to receive 20 today, and I did see them there. I've not heard our final number. So, although that we have 20 coming, you may have 18 show up or something like that. We have another 20 people showing up next week, and if those 20 people show up, as we project, we should be, be able to open Commerce back up at the end of that week. We should be in a better staffing shape by then and still allow us to do all the things we're doing here at Greenville. So, we're, we're wanting to keep that timeline, and I think we've got a good plan to maintain that timeline right now. But it's all dependent on those, those guys showing up, you know, to work. So, we're processing people really quick, and it looked like they had about anywhere from 15 to 20 people this morning. I should hear a final number by this, by this afternoon. I should hear a final number by this, by this afternoon. Judge Stovall's asking about the state. And when they cleared us to, to use the state staffing, though, everybody sent their star request, including all the other counties and the TSA. So they did confirm with us about an hour ago that we would receive ten ICU nurses and eight respiratory therapists. That's in addition to what we already have going or are coming here. Um, I've not heard a start date from them yet, so I just heard the approval from the state. So one important thing to know about the state, if they do decide to pay, that would be excellent for everybody, all involved. In our last peak, in that sixty that we had here, thirty of those were state and thirty of them were paid directly by us. So that CARES fund that we had previously helped us with that thirty we paid for. So it was a, pretty much a half and half thing. And that's what we had to do last time, too. So although we, we'll have, you know, forty to sixty here by the end of this two weeks, the state will provide probably a quarter of that that's needed. And that's kind of the way it went last time, too.
Okay.
All right. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Let me ask you a question. Um, okay, the numbers are spiking on the COVID and of course, we got to have more help. You got some of your staff that are getting sick. When you hire all these extra people to come in and the numbers do start going back down again, what happens to those people? Is this like temporary positions or?
I guess so. Sure. Yeah. Um, when you do a private agency, they usually have a contract of, you know, the normal contract pre-COVID was thirteen weeks. So when you hired them on, um, you had thirteen weeks to have them there. And, uh, since COVID, they've been allowing us to do shorter contracts of eight weeks and that's kind of the minimum. But all the contracts during the crisis have been non-binding. So that means if you're decreasing down, you, you can send them back to the agency because they have somewhere else to place them more than likely. The supplies, uh, so much need right now that they will have somewhere else to put them really quick. Now with the state, um, they prefer that you, you know, if you don't need them, send them back immediately and they reposition them where a hospital needs them.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Any other questions? We all in agreement that we need to do this?
Yep. I would like to say this, Judge. We appreciate what y'all do and we appreciate your workers, the healthcare workers. And you know, uh, I'll tell you what, Hunt Regional has been the spearhead of our health here in Hunt County for many years. And we thank you. We thank you.
We appreciate the opportunity to serve and we appreciate your willingness to support us when, in a time of need.
Well, we want to be a partner. We can do all we can to keep the public healthy, so.
Thank you very much. We'll look forward to receiving that contract from Daniel.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Any other questions before we depart?
Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Reese.
Thank you all very much and for the work y'all do up here.
You bet.
Thanks.
All right, Daniel, did you hear from, there's no action needed on this, so any, you hear from Rob?
I did. Uh, he had me in B here, but something came up today, so we're going to have to do that by now.
Okay. All right. So is he available anytime?
Uh, yeah, I told him I'd give him a text, uh, as soon as we were ready.
Okay. Well, let's, uh, if we can do that right quick and then see if, uh, when we get him online, we'll move on. Uh, Zaur, do you have anything for us this time?
We, we have no items today.
No items, okay.
Does everybody have a copy of the election order? Do you have a copy of that, that order? That's what's going to have to be approved.
Right.
The, uh, the motion to, to the executive, if anyone wants to make a motion, the motion will be, uh, to accept that order as written. And if there's any changes that you want to make, either increasing or decreasing the dollar amount, then that'll need to be made in the motion as well.
Okay. Dollar amount's already in it?
I believe so.
Yeah. Yeah.
I told him seventy-five million dollars.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Went to a voicemail. He might have me call his office and bring me out, sit up there for a minute.
Did he, he respond to your text?
Yeah, so he'll be, or not to the text I just sent.
Okay.
But he'll be available, uh, this morning. So we're going to do another issue or go into executive session while we wait.
Okay. Uh, Commissioners, you want to talk about the budget at this time, actually, I remember before the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. Uh, we resubmitted it to the clerk on Friday and got it re-recorded and according to the new rules by August fifteenth. We filed it. We'll still be, Bruce, you want to update us on the calendar? That we're still doing the twenty-fourth meeting?
Yes, sir. We, we, uh, submitted a revised proposed budget to the county clerk and we designated it revised and it replaced what we had in there before since the deadline had changed. So we got it in there Friday. We had, uh, given each of y'all a book showing what changes that we made from the previous, uh, proposed budget. Uh, we, we have a scheduled budget hearing on, um, the twenty-fourth, uh, this month. We had that notice in the paper on Saturday, the Herald banner. And then we plan on adopting the budget on the thirty-first as well as adopting the tax rate. And, uh, that pretty well.
And twenty-fourth, we'll approve the elected official salaries, too, is that?
Yeah, yes, sir. And, and we ran that ad, uh, last, last week, I believe. And, and that was in there, too. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, uh, y'all want to talk about any of the budgets at this time? Or you want to go into executive session and talk about any of it or at some point?
I'd rather go in the executive session.
Okay, well, we'll do that at a later date. Uh, see if we can hear from Rob or do we want to go ahead and go take, take care of executive session and come back to him or?
Yeah, and then if there's anything to discuss about this.
We can come out and, yeah, okay. All right, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session under items.
One through four.
One through four.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're in executive session at ten thirty-seven.
When we get live, you can let me know.
We're live.
We're live.
We're live, okay. It's 11:07, we're back in regular session. Commissioners, we're going to go to action item number one, an order calling a bond election to be held on November 2nd, 2021 within the county, making the provision for the conduct of the election and other provisions relating thereto. Commissioners, we're talking about calling a bond on November 2nd to build a new jail complex to include sheriff's offices and allow for future expansion of not only county buildings but for expansion of the jail itself as need comes, so hopefully we don't run out of space in the next several decades. So with that, y'all got any questions about the order? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the order, calling an election for November 2nd, 2021, for approval to issue bonds in the amount of $75 million for acquiring, designing, constructing, improving, and equipping Hunt County law enforcement and detention center facilities, including related court facilities and acquisition of land there too, and levy of a tax payment thereof.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners. Action item number three, appointing a committee to review the Human Resources Department organization. Commissioners, I recommend that I serve as the chairman of that committee along with Commissioner Randy Straight and Treasurer Brittany Turner, Sheriff Terry Jones, Sandy, and do we want to go ahead and put Stacy, Stacy from the Auditor's Office with approval of Judge Bench? Can I hear a motion for approval of the committee?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number four, 2021 budget. Commissioners, I know we had some things to talk about. Do we want to do the recommendation at this time or at the... Do we want to do the recommendation at this time or at the next, on the 24th to give everybody time to think about all that? I'd like to wait till the 24th. We've got plenty of time to make those changes that we discussed in executive session, so.
You said that'd be better, Bruce?
Well, I'll put it this way, if you make changes now, we're not going to go in and do a new book and everything. So I mean, we could just kind of tell you where we are as far as the deficit and the fund balance and that'd basically be it, but you know the numbers you're kind of thinking about anyway and where we are now. So yeah, I agree with you, Judge.
Yeah, I'd like to leave the -- I mean, we just filed it. I'd like to have some comments come back and make sure before we jump out and spend any more money that we know what we're getting into. We got a meeting next, is it next Tuesday is the 24th?
24th.
Yeah, so next Tuesday we'll be kind of finalizing it. If you want to call a special meeting on Friday or Thursday or Friday this week to discuss it in more detail before the 24th, then that's fine too. But those things we talked about won't be major changes, so I'd like for us to look at all the budget and since it just got filed and revised on Friday before we take any action to change anything.
Your Honor, I request this, that Friday, that we not have it on a Friday if we are going to have anything prior to.
That's fine. Or we can do it next Monday, it doesn't matter. If you feel like we need one, if we don't, or you change your mind, just you can call me and we can sure call one before we. So now, we're adopting the rate on the 24th. We're not approving the budget till the 31st.
No, so we're not doing the rate on the 24th because when we go with no new revenue rate, which we're doing, we don't have to take that separate action to adopt the tax rate.
Okay, so we'll do that on the 31st.
And that's the way our advertising is going to read.
Okay, so we're going to approve everything on the 31st.
Everything's going to be on the 31st, so the 24th, we have the public hearing and then I guess the verbiage and the agenda needs to be where we can still take some action, you know, on any changes to the budget.
Right.
And we'll have that for the 31st.
Right, and then the Marx recommendation that gives them a week to get public comments back anyway and digest that so that if we make any additional or final changes, it'll be on the 31st. Yes, sir. Okay, everybody good with that? Okay. Daniel, do you have any comments online? Okay, being nobody in the public here unless anybody, no other comments. Commissioner, nothing else before the court today? I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Do we have approval of the counts payable and all that?
Nope, there's not any.
Okay.
Sorry to ask that question, sorry.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we're adjourned at 11:13. Thank you, everybody. Was this fire protection agreement here just for our review?
Yeah, well, I was talking to Richard and them this morning, that is the current one we have right now.
Oh, this is the current one?
Yeah, they just made them.
Just for our information?
Yeah, but that's something for me and Billy.
Yeah, and y'all going to get the one from the hospital?